I'm new for a year. Yeah, you're all good. You're all good. Welcome to City Council. Let's go ahead and start with the roll call.
Mayor Coombs. Mayor Pro Tem Bagley.
Here.
Council members Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Pack.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, we have a quorum.
All right, thanks. Let's go ahead and start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
Yeah, whatever. I just screwed up. I was thinking about something else. All right, just a general reminder, anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those who, only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their names on the list will have the opportunity to speak during public hearing items this evening or at the final call, public invited to be heard, at the end of the meeting. Let's go ahead and move to the approval of minutes. Do we have any? No? Any agenda revisions?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, there are a couple. We have added consent agenda item 9O, which is Resolution 2016-38. And I will read that when we get to it, but it is about the RTD and urging them to build the Northwest Rail Line. We are removing from the agenda entirely item 8C, which is the IGA with the Longmont Downtown Development Authority, and item 11A, which is the General Improvement District Number One Resolutions. They have not yet been acted on by the authority because of the snow last week.
Thank you, Ms. Skitt. Is there a city manager's report?
No report.
Great. We'll just keep moving along then. At this point, we'll go ahead. There's a proclamation. There's a proclamation designating the week of March 28 through April 2, 2016, as Community Development Awareness Week. Tracy DiFrancesco, the Housing Community Investment Program Specialist, is here to accept the proclamation, I believe. Karen, are you first?
I am first.
All right, go ahead, Karen.
And Tracy is here to accept the proclamation. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, council members. My name is Karen Roney. I'm the Community Services Director for the city. And this is the 42nd year of the Community Development Block Grant Program. And the city of Longmont has been an entitlement community since 1984 and directly receives an allocation each year of CDBG funding. And this funding is, is an incredible resource for the community. It helps us to aid neighborhoods who are in need, that are in need of revitalization, to help with economic development efforts, and certainly to meet a variety of critical needs of our lower-income residents here in, in Longmont. So, the, this week is the Community Development Week, and it's celebrated this entire week. And it really gives us an opportunity as staff to, to talk to the community about the kinds of work that we do with those dollars that come from housing and urban development and about the significant role that the CDBG program has in assisting Longmont residents to achieve self-sufficiency and improve their, in their lives and their standard of living. So what I would like to do is to introduce Tracy DiFrancesco, who is one of our program specialists for the CDBG program. And she will come down and talk about some of the accomplishments of our program.
Mayor Pro Tem Bagley and city council members. My name is Tracy DiFrancesco, and I'm, I work for Kathy Fiddler with the Housing and Community Investment Program. I just wanted to add from what Karen has said that we have received since 1984, $15.4 million in CDBG and home funds. We've received $1.9 million in program income. And we have, with that funding, we have helped 99.4% of those funds benefiting low and moderate income households and individuals. So we ask that this week be set aside to recognize the significant role that the CDBG and home programs play in investing in our city.
We can do that. All right, so let's go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas for 42 years, the Community Development Block Grant Programs provided local governments with the resources required to meet the needs of persons of low and moderate income. And whereas in Longmont, 32 years of Community Development Block Grant funding has had a significant impact on our local economy, not only through the $15.4 million in grant funding and $1.9 million in program income received and invested in our community, but also through job creation and job retention, an improved local tax base, the physical redevelopment of our infrastructure and housing stock, reinvestment in our neighborhoods, improvement of the lives of our lower-income residents, and the development of a strong network of partnerships with the many nonprofit agencies that provide services to our residents. And whereas the city of Longmont appreciates the flexibility of the Community Development Block Grant Program that allows our community to identify, prioritize, and resolve our most pressing local problems such as affordable housing, neighborhood revitalization, and job creation and economic development. And whereas the week of March 28 through April 2, 2016, has been set aside to reaffirm the significance of the Community Development Block Grant Program in meeting the needs of low and moderate income residents and eliminating or preventing slums or blighting conditions. Now therefore, I, Brian Bagley, Mayor Pro Tem, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim the week of March 28 through April 2, 2016, as Community Development Awareness Week in Longmont and invite all to join us in recognizing the Community Development Block Grant Program and its importance to our community. So is there somebody here that needs a picture or something?
Yes.
All right.
So in addition to Tracy, I would like to invite a couple of our other staff members who are in the audience. And that would be Kindra Daniels, who serves as our accountant for our disaster recovery dollars, and Molly Luth-Groth, who is our resiliency planner. And so, we would like Mayor Pro Tem.
And the mayor's gone, so I'd actually ask council to all come down.
That would be fabulous.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
We're all coming down.
All right, you want to hold the proclamation?
I'm getting it for you.
There you go. You can hold it right there. Hold it like it's... Okay, everybody look here. I'm going to do this a couple of times. Do one more. Same way. Everybody ready? Thank you.
All right, great, thanks. All right. All right, with that, let's go ahead and move on to first call, public invited to be heard. We've already read what's on the top of this, so we're not going to do it again. Ron Gallegos.
Ron Gallegos, 424 Kimbark, Longmont, Colorado. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. I'm coming to speak on item 11D, the consideration of options for the local licensing authority. I was on the council back in 97 when we changed to the current form. We had had a citizen liquor licensing authority in the old days. And in the old days, meetings started at seven and could run until four in the morning. It was always interesting to see the process and how the authority got to the decision-making. And I continue to see that as a person now doing consulting for liquor licensing in various communities. And a number of communities continue to use the old model. I guess I liken it to having a very efficient, effective, fair, and professional model that we're using now. And I think it's served us well. I think we get good results. I think it's clear to the community. The standards are well-known. They're implemented in a very consistent and professional fashion. So I only really have good things to say about the way we do it. I think there's some efficiencies that the staff is recommending to drive some improvements. I think I would support those wherever we can make the process better, easier and clearer. I'm in favor of that. But by and large, this process has worked very well, and I would urge you to retain the current model. Thank you.
Thank you. Edward Vanegar?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. I, my name is Edward Vanegar. The address is 549 Pere Green. We own, our company owns two restaurants in Boulder County, one here in Longmont and one in Boulder, the city of Boulder. So we have the privilege of holding two liquor licenses in Boulder County in both jurisdictions. We've experienced both models. And we thoroughly enjoyed, if you can say enjoyed, like a prostate exam, both the, the situation in Boulder. There is a panel of, there's a committee, a board member group of five. You can be persuasive. You can be vetted by, complete by a board group. You can have Q and A. You can have constructive criticism. You can have performance goals met. You can have a conversation. And you can persuade members to your side if your paperwork is a little lacking. But you can have a discussion. And we were not able to do that here. It was, it was clear and concise, but there was no discussion. We did meet the needs and desires of the community in both jurisdictions in terms of our petitions and our supporters and our witnesses. But we thoroughly enjoyed and would welcome the change here in Longmont to have a board. Thank you.
Thank you. Harvey Yocum?
Passing.
Okay. Rohit Dan?
Good evening, Mayor Bagley, council members. My name is Rohit Dan, address 2451 East Randall Mill Road in Arlington, Texas, 76011. I'm here as president of Simran Hospitality in regards to the proposed hotel zoning change at Harvest Junction. That would be ordinance 2016-20. I wanted to introduce myself and be available for any questions as I've gone through a pretty exhaustive process through Planning Commission to support my case. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Sharice Montgomery?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley and council. My name is Sharice Montgomery. I reside at 1920 Andrew Alden Street here in Longmont. As a parent of a swimmer and a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and a user of our awesome recreation facilities here in town, we're in favor of continuing the feasibility study of the pool and ice rink. Granted, I only have experience with the pool at this point, but after the public meetings I've gone to, there are just as many supporters of indoor ice rink facility in our city. As an example, the cost of our high school swim teams was increased by 200% from use of a local pool to whole practices this year. I think if we continue with this feasibility study to see if it's going to be best for our community, we'd be benefiting not only all of the users, but all of the citizens of Longmont as we continue to age. And a lot of our recreation facilities can't be used by the elderly, but swimming is always a great release of your joints. And all those aches and pains can kind of go away after buoyancy effects take place. So I am in support of extending the feasibility study for our pools and indoor ice rink facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon O'Leary?
Good evening, Sharon O'Leary, 534 Emery Street. Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, sounds good, and council members. I'm here tonight to ask your support to fund Phase Two of the feasibility study for competitive pool and ice rink. With your approval, this study could be completed within four months. I think this is very important because it will stay within a timeline of the direction you gave us. You asked the staff to go back and look and see if they could work with the same... I think it's clear to the community. The standards are well-known. They're implemented in a very consistent and professional fashion. So I only really have good things to say about the way we do it. I think there's some efficiencies that the staff is recommending to drive some improvements. I think I would support those wherever we can make the process better, easier and clearer. I'm in favor of that. But by and large, this process has worked very well, and I would urge you to retain the current model. Thank you.
Thank you. Edward Vanegar? Vanegas?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. My name is Edward Vanegas. Address is five forty-nine Peregrine. We own, our company owns, two restaurants in Boulder County, one here in Longmont and one in Boulder, the city of Boulder, so we have the privilege of holding two liquor licenses in Boulder County in both jurisdictions. We've experienced both models, and we thoroughly enjoyed, if you can say enjoyed, like a prostate exam, both the situation in Boulder. There is a panel of, there's a committee, a board member group of five. You can be persuasive. You can be vetted by, complete by a board group. You can have Q and A. You can have constructive criticism. You can have performance goals met. You can have a conversation, and you can persuade members to your side if your paperwork is a little lacking, but you can have a discussion. And we were not able to do that here. It was, it was clear and concise, but there was no discussion. We did meet the needs and desires of the community in both jurisdictions in terms of our petitions and our supporters and our witnesses, but we thoroughly enjoyed and would welcome the change here in Longmont to have a board. Thank you.
Thank you. Harvey Yocum. Passing? Okay. Rohit Dan?
Good evening, Mayor Bagley, council members. My name is Rohit Dan, address twenty-four fifty-one East Randall Mill Road in Arlington, Texas, seven six zero one one. I'm here as president of Simran Hospitality in regards to the proposed hotel zoning change at Harvest Junction. That'd be ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty. I wanted to introduce myself and be available for any questions, as I've gone through a pretty exhaustive process through Planning Commission to support my case. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Sharice Montgomery?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley and council. My name is Sharice Montgomery. I reside at nineteen twenty Andrew Alden Street here in Longmont. As a parent of a swimmer and a member of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and a user of our awesome recreation facilities here in town, we're in favor of continuing the feasibility study of the pool and ice rink. Granted, I only have experience with the pool at this point, but after the public meetings I've gone to, there are just as many supporters of indoor ice rink facility in our city. As an example, the cost of our high school swim teams was increased by two hundred percent from use of a local pool to whole practices this year. I think if we continue with this feasibility study to see if it's going to be best for our community, we'd be benefiting not only all of the users, but all of the citizens of Longmont as we continue to age. And a lot of our recreation facilities can't be used by the elderly, but swimming is always a great release of your joints, and all those aches and pains can kind of go away after buoyancy effects take place. So I am in support of extending the feasibility study for our pools and indoor ice rink facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon O'Leary?
Sharon O'Leary, five thirty-four Emery Street, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, sounds good, and council members. I'm here tonight to ask your support to fund Phase Two of the feasibility study for competitive pool and ice rink. With your approval, this study could be completed within four months. I think this is very important because it will stay within a timeline of the direction you gave us. You asked the staff to go back and look and see if they could work with the Saint Rain School District. If this study is completed within four months, then we have some very hardcore data that we can bring to the school district, since the school district's looking to pass a bond this fall. They could include money to address the pool issue as part of that bond, given that they, they're, they are major players in the competitive pool use. By working jointly with the pool, our pool costs could be included in their bond. Other neighboring cities have already done this. Thornton and Loveland both did a construction of a pool with their school district. Another key factor is the feasibility study can confirm the need for a fifty-meter pool. If Longmont built a fifty-meter pool, it would be the only one in all of Boulder County. This would be great because the city would be able, the city and school district would be able to hold meets, which would bring in tourism dollars. It will also meet the need of our aging community. It is true, the biggest bulk of baby boomers are ready to hit the pools, so this way we can have a competitive pool factor for part of our city and have centennial pool there for seniors. Finally, the study will confirm what we already know. Longmont loves its ice rink. This year was a banner year for our small ice pavilion at Roosevelt Park. A full-size, one-to-two pad ice rink is just what's needed for our growing community. This too will provide opportunities through tourism, through leisure, as well as competitive activities, and will uphold Longmont's goals for healthy lifestyles. Please continue to, continue with your support for Phase Two by dedicating the needed funds through council's contingency general fund. Again, I want to thank you for your time and dedication that you give to the citizens of Longmont. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Basman?
Hello, Mayor Pro Tem. I'm Bagley and council. I'm Shelley Basman. We live at thirty-four fourteen Lakeview Circle, where we share the surface rights with our old dog. I was reading the newspaper this week and saw that the Hilton, or permutation of the Hilton, wants to build a hotel in Longmont, and I think that's a wonderful idea, but I don't think the place they, the site they selected is a very good idea. That sewage treatment plant by any other name treats sewage, and it can be hermetically sealed, but if you walk out the door on an inverse, you know, when there's an inversion, that's not going to be very nice for Longmont's good name. And on NPR, there's possibility of using sewage stuff by way of a digester to make methane for natural gas instead of bringing it up out of the ground. I believe the story was out of Grand Junction, but someday Longmont may want to convert our sewage and compost adds into it right over there next to the Hilton, and who knows what that would smell like? Methane, it smells. So I urge you not to, not to, there must be another site in Longmont for a lovely Hilton, but not next to the sewage treatment plant. And then secondly, I was here last week when, when you approved ten thousand acre feet to be hauled over or through under the continental divide from the Colorado River. Colorado River itself is overextended, and to bring in more water than our staff believes is necessary is unconscionable. It's not cheap water. The only cheap water is the water we save, and we can do a whole lot more of not using water than bringing over what? It is just wrong. And, and that's all. So thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, Ms. Skitt, could you go ahead and introduce the consent agenda?
Sure. First item on the consent agenda, excuse me, is ordinance oh, two thousand sixteen nineteen, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the City of Longmont to lease the following parcels of real property at the Vance Brand Municipal Airport. Hangar H fifteen to Hangar H fifteen LLC, Hangar H forty-one to Dodi and Gail Shipper, Hangar H seventeen A to Keith Griffith, Hangar H eighteen A to Gary B Townsend, Hangar H nineteen to Gary Brinkoff and Carol A Brinkoff, Hangar H twenty to Scott and Leslie Westfall, Hangar H twenty-two to Horizon Flying Club LLC, Hangar H twenty-three to Horizon Flying Club LLC, and H twenty-five to Peter Langerman and Stephen T. Croft. Public hearing and second reading of this ordinance is scheduled for April twelfth. Item eight B is ordinance two thousand sixteen twenty, a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the rezoning of Harvest Junction North Replat B, Block Two, Lot One, generally located north of, north of East Camprat Boulevard and east of Martin Street, removing certain additional use restrictions from the property's planned unit development commercial zoning. And public hearing and second reading is scheduled for April twelfth. Item eight C has been removed from the agenda. Item eight D is resolution two thousand sixteen twenty-seven, a resolution of the Longmont City Council adopting the Boulder County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Item eight E is resolution two thousand sixteen twenty-eight, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and Colorado Department of Local Affairs for a contract amendment to a two thousand fourteen flood recovery staffing assistance grant. Item eight F is resolution two thousand sixteen twenty-nine, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and Department of Army for cost sharing for a feasibility study for flood risk management on Saint Rain Creek. Item eight G is resolution two thousand sixteen thirty, approving the addendum accepting the terms and conditions of the programmatic agreement between the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the Colorado State Historic Preservation Officer, and the Colorado Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for implementation of Section one oh six of the National Historic Preservation Act regarding disaster recovery activities. Item eight H is, is three, is three resolutions. The first one is resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-one, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and the City of Boulder for CDBGDR funding for flood recovery. The second item is resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-two, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and the City of Louisville for CDBGDR funding for flood recovery. And the third one is resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-three, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and the Town of Nederlin, also for CDBGDR flood, funding for flood recovery. Item eight I is resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-four, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and the City of Boulder as the lead agencies for the Boulder County, Broomfield County Home Consortium for a subrecipient agreement for home funds. Item eight J is resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-five, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and Boulder County for its Genesis Program. Eight K is resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-six, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and Boulder County for its Circles Program. Item eight L is resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-seven, approving the air quality planning services agreement between the City and the Regional Air Quality Council. Item eight M is approve five capital improvement program amendments. Item eight N is appoint Scott Gwynn to a regular position on the Master Board of Appeals. And item eight O is resolution two thousand sixteen thirty-eight, urging the Regional Transportation District to build the Northwest, Northwest Rail Line to Longmont. And staff would like to pull items B and F for presentations.
Are there any other consent agenda items that council would like to pull? Councilmember Finley?
I was just going to move consent, so.
All right.
I move the consent agenda. Minus B and F.
All right. Great. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion passes unanimously with the mayor absent. Let's go ahead and go to...
Ordinance is on the second reading.
Ordinance is on the second reading.
And the first ordinance is two thousand sixteen sixteen, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand sixteen. We do not have a formal staff presentation, but staff is in the audience.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on ordinance two thousand sixteen sixteen. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this topic? All righty, seeing, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Is there any other, is there any additional discussion, seeing that it's been so flamboyant this evening, this topic? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote, if we have a motion. Oh, councilmember Santos, thank you.
Thank you, MPT. I move ordinance two thousand sixteen dash sixteen.
Now we shall vote. It was good. It was good. I like that, like RG three. Yeah, I like that, I like that. The vote is unanimous once again with the mayor absent.
Your next item is ordinance, there are two ordinances. Ordinance two thousand sixteen seventeen is an ordinance approving a land use amendment to the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan for the villages at East Gate, generally located south of Seventeenth Avenue and west of County Line Road. And ordinance two thousand sixteen eighteen, which is an ordinance amending the concept plan for the villages at East Gate, all same location. You can held one public hearing for both ordinances, but we will need separate motions.
All right, thank you. To begin... Go ahead.
Beg your pardon. Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, my name is Ben Ortiz, planner in Planning and Development Services Division. You know, I've been to Planning and Zoning Commission so often that, you know, it's a matter of habit now. Members of the city council, my apologies. The villages at East Gate Project is located on your screen. Let me pull up the... Is it located in the, is located south of Seventeenth Avenue and west of County Line Road, as depicted by this red boundary here.
I know, I was trying to match up.
So the, the portion of this application includes a land use amendment to the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan or the Longmont, or the LACP. On the left is a snapshot of the existing LACP of the project area, and on the right is the proposed amendment. The shot on the left shows the full extent of the industrial economic development land use, which encompasses the entire project area and then some. The applicant is proposing to change approximately fifteen point seven acres of industrial economic development land use to high-density residential land use. And the high-density residential designation will allow housing, housing densities greater than twelve units per acre and up to thirty units per acre, as depicted by this brown portion here. The second facet of the project is an amendment to the concept plan, which was approved back in two thousand nine. One major difference between the proposed concept plan from the current concept plan is the fact that the new concept plan only includes Parcels one, two, and three of the original concept plan, whereas the original concept plan included what you see here, plus Parcels nine and ten, which are located on the northwest side of the proposed concept plan, and the remainder of Parcel Two to the west of the middle parcel, right in here, and Parcel Four, which is the west of the southern parcel. So in order to easily understand the differences between the current concept plan and the proposed concept plan, as it pertains to the residential uses, I created a side-by-side comparison chart. I kept Blocks four, nine, and ten from the original. In the current concept plans, you can see what sort of residential uses are still allowed on those blocks. The blocks where changes are proposed are highlighted in yellow. In the concept plan that was approved back in two thousand nine, the only type of residential allowed on Parcel One is a multifamily permitted as second-story residential. So an important point worth noting, though, is that the current concept plan has no upper cap on residential density over apartment, for apartments over commercial, and the intent being there would be retail or some other commercial use on the ground floor with residential above it. This requirement is removed in the proposed concept plan. Live-work is allowed in the previous concept plan, or I should say the current, on Parcel One and is retained for the new concept plan as well. And the newly added residential uses include one-family attached and detached dwellings, two-family dwellings, three-family dwellings, four-family dwellings, foster family home, family care home, group care homes, and group care institutions. In the current concept plan, the asterisks next to the multifamily dwellings requiring multifamily to be permitted as second-story residential have been removed, so you can see the differences there. Lastly, a new note was added to the proposed concept plan, which states that any percentage of uses are allowed on any of the three parcels. The developer could go with a hundred percent residential, a hundred percent commercial, or any combination of residential and commercial. The commercial uses that were previously allowed as part of the original concept plan are going to be retained. The applicant is proposing to add pet kennels, doggy daycare facilities, food trucks, and gyms and fitness facilities as new uses. So traffic safety was raised as a concern at the intersection of Seventeenth and Moonlight and was specifically brought up by some of the residents. That would be right here. The drivers feeling safe entering onto Seventeenth because eastbound cars are approaching on a curve. The city does plan to conduct speed studies on Seventeenth Avenue between Pace and County Line by summer. If speeds warrant lower speeds, the city will consider lowering the speed limit. I checked for any accident history at Seventeenth and Moonlight, and in the past five years, there were two accidents. One involved a bicyclist riding against traffic on the wrong side of the road that got hit, and the other was a rear-ender of an eastbound vehicle turning, turning left, so this here. Neighbors took exception to the fact that the existing Sunshine and County Line intersection is a right-in, right-out only, and that's right here. And they feel it'd be inadequate once the neighborhood builds out. That said, there will be several more opportunities for access and egress into the neighborhood. A new full-movement intersection at Armstrong and Seventeenth will be constructed. That would be here. Rustic Drive will punch through to County Line and will be a right-in, right-out intersection initially. That's right here. And when County Line is widened, the intersection of Rustic and Sunshine will be converted to three-quarter movement intersections. The County Line widening project will happen as part of a city-initiated project or as part of this development. We also received concerns regarding environmental impacts to the Jim Hamm Nature Area, including water runoff, increased trash, noise, and air pollution, and the question was raised whether we would require an environmental impact study on the project. Water runoff impacts to Jim Hamm Nature Area should not be an issue. All the water will be flowing toward the detention pond down here, south and west of the project. As to air quality, none of the proposed uses are industrial. Lastly, trash service will be required for all the uses, so trash impacts should be minimal. Will we require an environmental impact study? Probably not, but given that the city will be acquiring right-of-way, an environmental site assessment will eventually be required for this project during the PUD process. So at its February seventeenth meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation to approve the land use amendment and concept plan amendment without conditions by a vote of six to zero, and that does conclude my presentation. And the applicant is also here. While he has a presentation, he's available for, for questions if you prefer that.
I actually, first of all, is there any questions from council? No? Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley. My question is, first of all, out of my ignorance, what is a foster family home?
Councilmember Peck, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, I believe that's just a, a typical family that, that allows for foster children within the home.
Do you, do you have to have that in a, in a concept plan? I didn't. I didn't understand. Isn't that a social services thing? I mean, to actually put that in a concept plan?
Councilmember Peck, yeah, that's a good question. I know that it was, it was previously listed in the previous concept plan, but it was not listed as one of the allowed uses, and so the applicant... And so the applicant just chose to, to add it. He may, he may want to elaborate on that some if he'd like.
Okay. My other question is, are these all going to be rentals? Or are they going to be units that are for sale?
Councilmember Peck, the, the proposed concept plan includes both commercial and residential. And it will allow for both single-family, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, multifamily. So I suspect that should the developer ultimately develop residential, it could be a combination of both.
Okay. Do you have any idea what the market value, what they're going to ask market value, are these going to be affordable, any of them? Or is it all a market value?
Councilmember Peck, I would defer to the applicant on that question. I, I don't know that they're actually going to be the developers on this project, but I think they could elaborate on that. They actually don't know what the ultimate products are going to be at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Christensen. And I have to look because, Councilmember Christensen, I apologize, but it's super small print. I don't see how the mayor reads this.
Well, he doesn't see me anyway.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Has, have you done any, this is adding a great deal of density and therefore a great deal more children. And I'm wondering how that will affect the, the school that's in that area. Does any, has anyone done a study yet of that?
Councilmember Christensen, well, we will certainly be notifying the St. Brain Valley School District at the time of the PUD, and we'll be determining the school capacity at that time. I don't believe that, that we've reached capacity in the northeast part of town, however.
I've got a question. Notice how I waited till the end this time. See that? See that? See that? My question is, the only concern I have was it's changed a little bit. And so my, can you go back to that slide? Two slides back? Maybe it was more slides back, right there. It says, "Nothing in this document shall require a certain percentage of any single use on the property or parcels. Any parcel may consist of 100% residential, 100% commercial, or any combination thereof." In addition, so my question is, that's way different than last time, so are we just basically saying they can do whatever they want?
Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, not exactly. The, a lot of the commercial uses that you see in the original concept plan are retained for this concept plan. There were a few minor changes to the commercial. These here, pet kennels slash doggy daycare facilities, food trucks, gyms, and fitness facilities. And those are the only three that, three commercial uses that are different from the previous concept plan. In terms of the residential component, you'll notice that what they've added are one-family attached and detached, as opposed to patio homes. It doesn't preclude patio homes, however. Then we have two-family dwellings, which were added, three-family dwellings, four-family dwellings. And then the multifamily was retained, was retained. But what was removed from the multifamily was the requirement that it had to be over commercial. So, and then of course...
Can you repeat that? The requirement is what?
In the previous concept plan, it required multifamily over commercial. And so that requirement was removed in this concept plan. Because they didn't find that there really was any market for that.
Right. So, so technically, though, they could come in and have 17 acres of like food trucks? Or pet kennels? Or food trucks, pet kennels, and doggy daycares?
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, allow me to elaborate a little bit more. So this is, this is the concept plan. So basically what that means is they're saying these are the uses that could go on this site. But any, any, any development would have to go through both a preliminary PUD development plan process and then the final PUD development plan process. Preliminary PUD development plan process would have to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then there's also an opportunity for appeal up to city council. However, given that, and given the market, I, I highly doubt we would see all food trucks. But...
But I'm just saying, but then the argument becomes used by right. You know, if we change this, it's, I guess I don't under, this, this one just seems different to me.
It's minorly different. It's different in the sense that, that the majority of the differences lie right in here.
I don't have any problem with, if you want, I don't have a problem with that. I guess I have a problem with, it's going to either be, I mean, it's the first time that I remember changing the Longmont area comprehensive plan to read that they can basically do anything that they want but for industrial. But that's how I'm reading it. And I hear what you're saying, but what you're saying is not jiving with what I read in the packet.
Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, you have, kind of think about it like Prospect. And so Prospect has their, their, you know, food truck night. And I think that was what the, the applicant was saying, because in, in our land development code, food trucks are actually allowed as, as temporary uses, in our temporary use section. But there are certain restrictions. You know, they can't be in residentially zoned districts. This is a PUD MU, so I don't believe it would apply here. And then also they can't be in parks where the city has concessions. But I think the intent was to allow for, say, a food truck night in, say, a private park. So this is really what we're looking at is sort of a, like a Prospect-type scenario where, where the densities would need to, to, they would need to meet the minimum density requirements for residential over across the entire site. But they could focus commercial on one site and residential on another site.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley. What this is, again, is, we have done amendments before. The concept, again, the concept plan is a concept of what may or may not be there. It's not saying that we're going, that staff or planning and zoning or a council who acts on this is going to let them do whatever they want. It's got to come in within those residences, that type of parcel and block in a concept plan. The amendments, looking at them, is just adding those, those, those three types of, you know, it's not going to, I'd be interested to see if anything came back as a whole food vending area, mobile food vending area, or a whole doggy daycare area, what it sounds like it's going to have a mix of single-family, multifamily, with some commercial and potentially, as Ben said, a Prospect-type-like of area for food vending. The foster home thing, which I thought was weird, too, has my brother-in-law and my sister-in-law foster care children. It was weird, it's just unusual to see that in, in that. But you don't want to make, you don't want to have it to where a HOA or someone else comes along and says, "By the way, you can't, you can't do that in this area." Or a group home, like Imagine, that's in there as well, as you can see in there. So we have done, done these items before. Ben, you're right, these amendments are very minor considering some of the other amendments we have done in the past. Again, this is like step one of a continuing step that goes down the line of a PUD plat, planning and zoning, council, again, at least two or three more times. So.
Councilmember Christensen.
I, I do see what Councilman, or Mayor Pro Tem Bagley is talking about, and I, I had the same problem when I first looked at this. It says basically that nothing can be required, a certain percentage of something cannot be required. And I, what, what I think we do not want to see is just nothing but a whole lot of very expensive housing, because we need affordable housing. And so we need, this is wonderful because you have a mix of housing stock, housing styles and kinds of things. And I would hope to see also a mix of income ranges, too. And also a mix of, what we're trying to do is build livable communities where people can walk to things, to services, and not have to get in their car and drive all over town and increase the traffic and, you know. And so that's why I think we're concerned about there being, if there's no requirement that a certain percentage will be commercial and offer services other than just doggy daycare, which is fine, but, you know, it's not the only thing people need. People would like to be able to walk to work. And so I, I would ask that people, that the developer keep that in mind, that we want to see a community being developed that reflects the Longmont area comprehensive plan. That's what we're aiming for, is livable, walkable communities.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley. Excuse my questions, I'm probably going to ask what the other ones did, just for more clarification. I don't understand why in a concept plan you would have any, anything under the multifamily dwellings, foster family, group, group care institutions. And when you're looking at parcel one on the current concept plan versus parcel one on, can you go back to that? There you go. Whoops. Versus parcel one on the proposed concept plan, this is basically what you're asking for the rezoning for. Am I correct that you are using parcel one differently?
Councilmember Peck, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, in a sense, yes, sort of. Because what it does is it allows more flexibility on parcel one in terms of the types of housing that could potentially be built there. It doesn't pigeonhole it to simply multifamily over commercial, which the, the applicant found that there really is no market for that at this point. So really, it, it does, it does allow for additional options. But it does not to say that, that those options would, would be built there. What would happen is that when the, the uses that will ultimately defined will have to be, be shown on the preliminary PUD development plan. And once the, once that preliminary PUD development plan gets approved through Planning and Zoning Commission, then those uses get set. So basically, then, this provides a lot of options for a future developer.
So my problem is that in planning the city, the comp plan zones different parts of the city for what they think, how they would like the city to grow and the way they want it to grow. So saying that the developer sees no reason for, for the commercial with living space above, does, I tend to think that the planning and zoning department, when they zone it, would like to see that out there in our city. So I, I have a problem with just, as Mayor Pro Tem Bagley said, does this make any sense at all? That basically we're giving free rein to do what you, whatever you want.
Councilmember Peck, so the, the original concept plan that came through did not actually have all the commercial. And so we, we had requested that they, they add that back in, because we wanted the opportunity for there to be things like local cafes and things like local restaurants. Because this type, this type of zoning, the PUD MU, mixed-use planning unit development similar to Prospect, allows for, for a wide variety of, of uses that could potentially be there. So, but however, the, the problem is that, that sometimes the market doesn't support certain types of uses. So really what we were offer, what we were after was trying to provide the greatest flexibility for this particular site. In, in the event that the developer wanted to do a mixture of uses and different housing types, there was less flexibility than what was, what was previously proposed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley. So I see that according, on the comp plan map now, if we approve this moving forward, the industrial economic development space to the west is basically going to be isolated. Is that basically relegating that to future changes in land use? Or, or could I come in there and build a welding shop?
Councilmember Moore, so off to the, off to the west, I believe, is the East Gate filing six. Eventually, that will be residential, I think it's single-family residential, which is proposed out there currently. But what was anticipated is that we're so far along in the envisioned Longmont process that the land uses that will ultimately be out there are, are getting close to being set. And then eventually they will come to you in the next, in the next few months, and those would be supportive of residential development.
So that industrial economic development property you're saying is going to be residential in the new, in the envisioned plan?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Assuming council passes it.
That's correct.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley. That is a mouthful. I, I sit on Planning and Zoning and, and listen to all of the presentations. This actually does what you want it to do, which is, gives more of a mixture in a community of types of housing, which is what we like. So it, in essence, is doing what we really would like to see. Or it will allow what we would really like to see where it is not allowed at this time. It makes a lot of sense. There's, I don't see any reason not to approve it. We'll see it again once we have a concept plan, and you can always do, vote against it then if you don't like it.
Councilmember Moore, do you want to say something? No, you really, you want to say something? No? Okay, all right. You said your 10 words. I guess going back to my original concern, I'd rather have this than potential industrial over there in Ward One at that area. So I'm going to vote for it. And if it's not a PUD that's acceptable, we'll deal with it then. Seeing that we have no additional questions or comments from council, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on ordinances both 201617 and 201618. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to share or say something? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any additional discussion? Councilmember Finley?
I would just like to move ordinance 201617.
It has been moved and seconded. Let's go ahead and vote. The, the motion passes unanimously with Mayor Coombs absent. Ms. Skitt?
Yeah, wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Forgive me, Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley. I would also like to move ordinance 201618.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's go ahead and vote on this one. The motion passes again unanimously with Mayor Coombs absent. Councilmember Finley, anything else? Then Ms. Skitt.
Your next item is the annual performance report to the community on the 2015 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and home programs, and public hearing to obtain comments. And Tracy D. Francesco will make this presentation.
Mayor Pro Tem Brian Bagley and City Council.
Full name, I just want to know the full name used there.
Brian Bagley?
Yes, yes.
My name again is Tracy D. Francesco, and I work for the Housing and Community Investment Department. And today we are, we've got... And today, we are, we've got in front of you, the HUD, that HUD requires that the local governments that receive CDBG home funds submit a consolidated annual and evaluation report, or the CAPR. This report provides information that measures the city's progress towards meeting our goals and priorities that are listed in our five-year consolidated plan. There's a couple of programs that we have listed in the CAPR this year. We are reporting on our rehabilitation programs. And in 2015, we allocated $172,239 towards those, those programs. We have five, we have four different programs. We have the emergency grant program that grants up to $2,500 to households that are income-eligible to fix emergency repairs to their homes that pose an immediate and health problem to the, to the family. We've spent $13,044 in that program. We also have the architectural barrier removal program that provides up to $5,000 in a grant to remove architectural barriers for households that are income-eligible that has a disabled family member, such as removing a tub and replacing it with a walk-in shower. We've spent $22,362 in that program in 2015. And then we have the general rehab program that provides up to $25,000 in a low-interest loan or deferred loan to qualified households to do emergency repairs, weatherization repairs, and other general repairs. We have developed a mobile home repair program in the last couple of years, which we've spent $76,298 under that program. And that's a $5,000 grant, one-time grant to mobile homeowners to address emergency-type repairs. This, we've assisted 36 low-income households under these programs. It's upside down. Sorry. We also have, we've been working on the Spangler Park improvements. That's a partnership with the Parks Department. There's a project that we have, it's under construction now. It's a total cost of $363,540, $96,356 of which are CDBG funds. It's located in the midtown revitalization area. And it's a project that's going to add new playground equipment and replace the old bathroom facility out at the park. Kendra Daniels will go over the funding.
Mayor Pro Tim Bagley and council members. My name is Kendra Daniels. I'm the accountant for Housing and Community Investment. What goes into our CAPR is three different of our funding sources. We have CDBG Home Consortium and Affordable Housing. What this slide shows you is what we did, what was available, committed, and expensed for our CDBG program. What you can see in 2014, a lot of what happens is we have unexpended funds that happen that roll into the next year. Our 2015 CDBG grant was $587,000. And then we also have program income that comes in, which is principal and interest from loans for prior programs within the CDBG entitlement. So total 2015 committed budget was $1.372 million. Of that, we spent $538,000. And then in 2015, some of those projects that were committed in prior years are still rolling over into the 2016 expenses. So of that $1.372, here's kind of where our, where it lies between community investment, neighborhood revitalization, program admin, economic development, and housing programs. So part of what Tracy talked about, our architectural barrier, our mobile home repair, our emergency grant, there was also the Suites renovation and new unit, which is also in that housing, that 65 percent. The R Center that we do rent deposits for seniors, the Boulder County Housing, which do counseling, and Habitat. We had a grant for the Habitat to purchase land and build single-family homes. Part of the neighborhood revitalization, the purple, is the Spangler Park. Community investment includes like Digital Divide, providing computers and internet service to middle school and high schoolers that don't have that access at home. So we provide them computers and access through this program. And then you also have the Longmont Downtown, Downtown Streetscape, which they're trying to do a block and make sure it's no more slum and blight, get it revitalized and stuff. So then also the economic development programs, we work with the Colorado Enterprise Fund, which provides loans to businesses for extra capital, extra, maybe they need equipment or they want to expand job creation. So that's what that kind of program does. So these were our CDBG expenditures and where they lie and fall between in community investment, economic development, housing, neighborhood. This is all 2015. We do have balance rolling into 2016, that was 2015, which includes the Suites renovation, includes the Downtown Streetscape, it also includes the Spangler Park that Tracy talked about, and we have a large chunk, about $268,000, that's for the housing programs. The other two things that fall into our CAPR that we report on are affordable housing. What we expensed for affordable housing was, we provided the Longmont Housing Downtown or Development Corporation $800,000 to purchase land that will eventually construct approximately 100 rental units. We also have the Home Consortium. The Home Consortium, the $41,000 you see there is from 2014 funds that rolled over in 2015 for the St. Brain Manor tub conversion. And then we had administrative expenses of $13,000. We were to receive the 2015 funding for Home Consortium, but our project funding fell through, so our project didn't go forward. But Boulder County actually had a project ready to go. And so that we would meet our timeliness and the yearly, we are receiving the 2016 funding rotation for our Home Consortium. And that is one thing that we did make with CDBG. CDBG also has a timeliness that we have to make sure we expend a certain percentage of our funds by October 31st, and we did meet that obligation. So I guess I open it up to Mayor Pro Tim Bagley and council members if you have any questions for us.
Any questions from members of council? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open, open the public hearing for ordinance 2016-16. Is there anyone in the audience who would like? Isn't there? Let's see here, right here. Ah, reading the wrong page. "We will now open the public hearing on the annual performance report to the community on the 2015 Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs to obtain comments." Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? All right, seeing no one, we will now close the public hearing. Is there any additional discussion from council? Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I move that we authorize staff to submit the CAPR to HUD.
Let's go ahead and vote. The motion passes unanimously with Mayor Coombs absent. Let's go ahead and address those items removed from the consent agenda, starting with 8B.
That is the ordinance for Harvest Junction. And Don Burchett is here to make a short presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim Bagley, Don Burchett. Planning and Development Services here to talk to you really quick about the Harvest Junction North rezoning request that is on the consent agenda and was pulled off tonight. I've got a quick presentation and then be available to answer any questions that you have. This is a little unique, and the reason that I think that this was asked to be pulled was because of the original recommendation from staff and the recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission were different. So I'll quickly go through the request for you. The request tonight is to rezone Lot 1 of Block 2 to remove some use restrictions that are on a specific parcel of ground that would allow for a hotel to be built on the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended conditional approval of the request to the city council. Up on the screen right now is the vicinity map. The property in question that's being requested to be rezoned is in red on the property. For those people at home watching, we have Ken Pratt Boulevard along the south. To the west of the property, we have Martin Street and the roundabout that goes over towards the bank and then over towards Best Buy. To the south, we have the Harvest Junction South Development and the area where Lowe's and Michaels and those businesses are located. As you can see up in the right-hand corner of the property, on the vicinity map, you can see the city's wastewater treatment plant that is roughly located a quarter mile away from the property. The parcel itself is currently zoned PUD-C, which stands for Planned Unit Development Commercial. The property has additional use restrictions on it that were put on the property when it was originally zoned, and I'll go through those really quick here in just a second. The site itself, the property, is 2.24 acres, and the comprehensive plan designation for this site is regional commercial. The parcel history, for those of you that don't know the history of this property, is that the property itself was a part of the bakery annexation. That property is what gave us the land for the recreation center and the museum when that property was annexed back in 1999. The property at that time that was located where both Harvest Junction North and South are, so again, Best Buy and Lowe's, both of those properties were originally zoned business light industrial when they were annexed into the city. And the land use designations at that time were for industrial economic development of the property. In 2003, Nick Wolfram built Ken Pratt Boulevard for us. He's here tonight and could answer any questions on that. His shovel's still out there in the car. But in 2003, when we opened that road, the property had been sold to then, at that time, Panatoni Development. Panatoni was working on requesting a land use amendment on the south side of the street for what became Harvest Junction South and where the Lowe's is and the Michaels and such. And then they also came in and talked to us in 2004 about changing the land use designation for what is currently Harvest Junction North. So where Best Buy is and where this property is currently located, everything north of Highway 119. At that time, the city council had heard the request, and what staff proposed at that time were progressive zoning restrictions on the property based on the odor modeling that we had done at the time, where the Public Works Natural Resources folks had gone out and done modeling of the, the odor that was around the plant at that time. And with the concerns of the impacts to the wastewater treatment plant, they requested that we restrict certain uses that may be more easily impacted by odors on the property. And at that time, when we originally rezoned the property to Planned Unit Development Commercial, as well as changed the land use to be regional commercial, we started at the west side of the property, over by where it's currently the Walgreens and the Chase Bank and Pinocchio's Restaurant. And those areas, because of their distance away from the wastewater treatment plant, did not have the restrictions that were put on as you got closer to the plant. And at the time, we, we did not have Martin Street yet open. Martin Street was built with the roundabout, but the bridge was not constructed at that time. And based on the modeling that we had at that time, as you headed towards the east and towards the wastewater treatment plant, those restrictions became greater and greater as you got closer to the plant, again, to try to prevent any conflicts between the treatment plant and any future users on that property. From 2004 to 2008, the city's Public Works Natural Resources Department invested a lot of money into the plant. They covered a lot of the facility, made improvements out there, and made a concerted effort to clean up and try to bring that odor that was a problem back in the early 2000s closer to the plant and try not to be as bad of a neighbor, really. In 2007, 2008, they had some more odor modeling done on the property to test, to make sure that what they had done actually did achieve the, the goal, which was to reduce that odor zone and bring it closer into the property. The modeling at that time showed that it did actually bring that odor zone closer into the plant. And at that time, Public Works Natural Resources recommended changing the use restrictions on what we called Block 2 at that time, which is where the, the Carl's Jr., the, there's a couple of the restaurants right there, and the Adams Bank right there on the corner. So it'd be the northeast corner of Martin and Ken Pratt, that we removed some of those restrictions, allowing restaurant uses, allowing some of the other uses that could have been originally impacted. And then also looking at that, that block that we're looking at tonight and making the determination of whether or not to make any changes. Based on the modeling that we had, the restrictions were basically left intact on that area with the restrictions for any residential areas or hotels or motels being built in that area. So today, what we're looking at is, again, is for the property in red, the lot right that's on the screen here, to have the restriction removed from it, to allow for a hotel, motel is what we had both of those in the original zoning ordinance restrictions, that that would be removed to allow for the construction. And so that is what you're looking at tonight, is specifically for this one lot, to have that request to remove that restriction from it. So again, that, that is the request for Block, for that property. Staff, when we reviewed the review criteria, based on the information that was presented to us and based on the latest information that we had, which was from that 2008 study that was done after the original improvements were done to the wastewater treatment plant, we felt that we could not support the recommend, or support the rezoning. We made a finding that the review criteria, specifically 1502-040A, C, and D, and then 1502-050H5, small a, small b, small c, had not been met. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the project, held a public hearing, took in the information that was presented at that time. They believed that the, not only the requirements that I identify there had been met, which were the ones we felt were not, but also felt that all the review criteria had been met. They made a recommendation of conditional approval, that's in the PZR, that's in your packet. That basically asked for the city attorney's office to be evaluating ways to, in general, to protect the, the city from any issues related to odor. And so that was their recommendation. And so the applicant is here tonight. They're requesting that you agree to the rezoning. The planning commission is recommending that, and so I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Other, Councilmember Moore?
Don, can you expand on the 1502-040 and 050? Reasons for recommending not approving it?
Certainly. Councilmember Moore and members of city council, the, the best thing I would point to, just again, for everyone's sake, is the, I know the Planning and Zoning Commission packet has the review criteria in it with our evaluation. And so you could definitely look at, at that to see our original request, but it's also in the city council packet as well in our communication. And our biggest concern was, again, when you're looking at the review criteria, and as an example, when we look at the 1502-040A, the review criteria states that the applicant... as an example, when we look at the 1502-040-A, the review criteria states that the application is consistent with the LACP as amended, conforms to any previously approved concept plan, preliminary plat or PUD plan, and complies with all applicable statutes, code ordinances, and regulations. And what we were looking at first is in the LACP. It talks about, one of our policies in there is that we're supposed to create a compatible land use system, and then to protect the city's investment in the wastewater treatment plant. So we felt that that was one of the things that we could not stand up here and say that we had evidence that was empirical, that we could show you that the odors from the plant were not going to cause us an impact to our treatment plant. When we look at the C requirement, it states that the application is consistent with the intent and purpose of the zone and proposes development compatible with neighboring existing and approved developments in terms of land use layout, site design, and access. Again, the reason that we put this restriction on there from the beginning of the zoning of this property was that we felt that this kind of a use was not compatible with the wastewater treatment plant. We still have that same concern. And then D is the application will not significantly adversely affect surrounding properties, the natural environment, existing or planned city transportation, or utility services, or facilities, or the impacts will be mitigated to the extent feasible considering existing plans and zoning for the area. Again, we believe that this could have an impact on a city facility. I think the planning commission, with their condition of approval, was trying to address this review criteria specifically. And if you wanted me to go through A, B, and C on 1502-050-H, only one of those has to be met. We just stated that we did not believe that either of the three could be met, at least in our review from staff.
So, okay, so... I know the P and Z wanted to have some protections to the city, but I guess I would like to know if that's a feasible outcome for this, and I'd ask that of the city attorney.
Mayor Proton Bagley and members of City Council, Eugene May, city attorney. So there is language in the ordinance addressing the liability that could arise from these land uses being next to each other. Pulling it up, it's on page 199. So basically, it says before the applicant can proceed further in the land development process, they need to enter an agreement whereby the owner shall agree to indemnify the city for any claims or damages arising from or connected to any impacts the city's wastewater treatment plant may have on the subject property. And so, at least from a legal perspective, it would indemnify the city for those types of claims. You know, looking at this issue, we did think that there was some exposure for, should there be civil penalties for violations of, say, an air quality regulation, that those are not, those can't be indemnified. You cannot contract away your liability for civil penalties in that context.
All right. Thank you. No further questions.
Councilmember Christiansen?
This is really, it's difficult because it's, on the other hand, the Hilton Group has done an incredible job of presenting the economic benefit here. And frankly, when I read fresh white cozy duvets and crisp linens, I want to move right in there. But, you know, it would, it's very exciting to think that the Hilton Group would put a hotel here. I would just, I would just like to see it somewhere else. I can't in conscience override what staff recommends here. I look at it also as, further on in this presentation by, well, in some of our information, thinking in the future, what is going to happen to the wastewater plant? We aren't going to move that. That is a good place for it. That's where it has been, and we want to expand it because we're going to need to expand it. Then what happens? Where will we expand it, and what new problems will we develop there? I just think that it is very unwise for us to get ourselves in a situation where we are, at the very beginning, worried about legal issues. And I take seriously what staff recommends, and I do think there are a lot of problems with this, that I know that the Hilton Group, I mean, this presentation too of the dynamic odor mitigation, you know, it sounds wonderful. But my concern is that placement, I wish they would move it somewhere else. That placement does not seem like a good idea to me.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Looking at what's been proposed, and not taking in my personal opinion, the question I have is, when is the redevelopment of the wastewater treatment plant going to take place?
Dale Radamaker will answer that for you.
Dale Radamaker, General Manager of Public Works. The question again, I'm sorry.
When is the wastewater, when are we going to start rebuilding the wastewater treatment plant, the redevelopment?
Mayor Proton Bagley and Councilmember Santos, in my 30 years, it's constantly been under construction.
Yeah, there's some pieces in there in 1950.
Likely always been under construction. We're currently doing about a $40 million project out there to improve its nutrient removal for ammonia. We will likely need to do additional improvements to the plant once we get phosphorus and other nutrient removal standards from the federal government. It's nonstop. It will, like I said, it's been under construction, probably always will be.
And when I first got on council, when I first went out there and toured it, there's, we have equipment out there from the 1950s. I'm not saying that stuff from the 1950s is old, but it's...
Thank you.
You're welcome, Councilmember Finley. But I mean, it's the operation and maintenance, it's always very high. But we're spending $40 million, $40 million, and if I'm not mistaken, Dale, we had, we talked about recapturing some of the methane and everything else. Is that correct?
Correct. Councilmember Santos, you're correct. We have any number of different ways that we're looking at that. One of them was to burn it to heat water for the digesters. I think what we're currently looking at is a natural gas loading station for vehicles. And so, similar to what the resident mentioned about Grand Junction, that was on NPR last night, very similar program.
Yeah, I remember, because when we had that discussion, it cost a little bit more, but council, and myself included, thought it was the best way to not only do some regeneration of methane, but also to potentially use that as energy for that plant. Thanks, Dale. But looking at this, I don't have a problem with Planning and Zoning's recommendation. Knowing that body and knowing the diverse mentalities of that body itself, just like the seven of us here, I was rather surprised that it was a unanimous decision. And going against staff recommendation. Here we have another one going against staff recommendation. Again, I would like to see those conditions to indemnify the city. You're only going to know that there, if you stay there, if a wastewater treatment plant is there, is that if you know that a wastewater treatment plant is there. I've stayed in many hotels around the world where if I looked out the window and, you know, kind of wondered, what is that over there? Had to Google it or whatever to actually see what is there, to understand that, oh, it was a wastewater treatment plant. I didn't smell anything, and nothing happened. It looks like what the applicant is looking to do is try to not only mitigate any issues that currently we have in the city by the filtration and everything else that they're looking at doing, but I would hope that we would be, in our thinking, progressively looking down to the future as when this plant is redeveloped, and as Dale said, is continually under redevelopment, that we continue to mitigate not only the smells, but what are we doing to help for generation of power and things of that nature for that plant? So I see this as, right now, you know, while we're, in 2016, this may not be the greatest place for it, but however, with what we are doing as far as the redevelopment of that plant, two to three years, five years down the line, there's going to be no problem at all. Just a thought.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Proton Bagley.
You're most welcome.
I'm getting used to that. Can someone tell me how a hotel would adversely affect a treatment plant? I was confused by that.
Bad food in the restaurant?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Bagley, Councilmember Finley, the potential impacts is, when Cal Youngberg and I discussed it, was that the implications would be that if we are receiving complaints, and either it goes to council or comes through the city manager's office, that there could be a request that we do improvements earlier to the plant, which then means that we would then be looking at trying to fund that. There could be implications. So while the nexus then that we would look at is to say that if we have someone who is calling in complaints about something that we then have to address, it would be impacting the wastewater treatment plant.
Have any of the businesses that are located in that area right now done any complaining about the smell?
Not that I'm aware of, but Cal would know that better than I would, and he's sick tonight, so he's not here.
Poor Cal. Okay. That's all the questions I have for you, I think. I think as long as there is a wastewater treatment plant, at some point, someone will probably complain about it. It's much better than it used to be, that's for sure. The improvements that we've already made have made a big difference. Having lived here all my life, I can attest to that. That and the turkey plant being gone, you can walk around outside now. It's great. I have found that people who do business do their due diligence in locating, finding locations for their business. I do, I was at Planning and Zoning the night that these folks presented. They said that they were not going to look at any other spots in Longmont to place this hotel, that this is where they wanted to be. And they made a convincing argument that their filtration of the air within the confines of their hotel would mitigate any sort of odor, should any odor occur. And I believe that's why Planning and Zoning approved it. If it's their money on the line, and if they understand that there's a wastewater treatment plant there, and we need this type of hotel for our businesses and business travelers, I think we should approve it. That's just how I feel about that.
Thanks for sharing, Councilmember Finley. Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Proton Bagley. I really like the idea of this hotel. I love the Hilton. But as Councilmember Santos said, with the improvements to the water treatment plant in two or three or four years, it wouldn't be a problem. But right now, it is a problem. And I do, this fiscal impact and fund source that is in our packet about the fiscal impacts are unknown, but would most likely impact wastewater funds if future improvements to mitigate odor were required. That kind of bothers me a little bit, because even though the Hilton is doing things to mitigate the odor with the fragrance coming through the filters, et cetera, if they did not work, my fear is that they would want us to mitigate that odor, and it would impact our funds and our ability to do that. Can you address that? The gentleman who came up and, yeah, would you address that, please?
Mr. Dan?
Councilmember Peck, to address that issue, I guess, my first response would be, it would follow a similar maintenance program. So as you have with fire alarm systems, et cetera. So keep in mind, these filtration systems are going above and beyond in addressing any of these potential odors. So all those are function behind a generator, electricity goes out. At the end of the day, you want to keep in mind that the liability, the risk, and the vetting process that goes hand in hand with Hilton, the franchise company, in selecting this specific site with its adjacent attachment to the shopping center, it's required to be here. There are no other sites in Longmont that would allow for it, hence the reason to bring it up now. So the systems, again, are excessive in a sense, but addressing any of the city's concerns was really our point. And then it's a, you know, long-term investment to make sure we address that. So again, the inversions in the odor, as I've touched on previously, isn't so much driven off of a daily odor that cycles through in the middle of the day, right? If that was really the case, then Ramco would have, you know, 0% occupancy there at Harvest Junction. But really, the point is, out of the varying periods of time, really a handful of times when there is a potential that it goes over, the 7DT is, most of it is prior, where maybe the average person wouldn't even be able to smell the odor, the handful of times it occurs in the middle of the night, mind you, that's really the key. There's this perception that this odor is trickling all the way through. It is just a handful of times. And again, we're going above and beyond to just address any worst-case scenario that may occur. That's really the key point here, that not only with filtration, the answer here just isn't filtration, it's building envelope, right? I mean, access, optimal footprint, where they park, they walk 10 steps to the entrance of a hotel. It shouldn't be under the residential piece, because I understand if I'm living there every day, I walk my dogs, I feel the odor two, three times a month, or three times a year, that's enough for the city to get complaints. But these are two to three night stays transient, following a similar pattern as retail tenants, which means they probably leave the hotel at 7:00 AM and they're back 7:00, 8:00 PM, you know, with the restaurant internal, that it follows the same pattern. Now, if they're out and about at 2:00 or 3:00 AM when there's odors, that's probably the last thing that they're going to smell at that point, right? But I guess my point is, outside of all the, you know, meeting all of the city's requirements, no other variances, meeting the riparian line, personally, I would not go through the investment. Hilton would not specifically approve this, just this site in Longmont. That's what I want to reiterate, if there was any real major issues, again. I think, again, it's like Councilmember Santos mentioned, you wouldn't know there's a wastewater plant unless someone points it out to you. I have other projects that have, you know, freeway noise and vehicle odor, you know, and that's far more extensive. But again, you know, to get the proper hotel, it's part of the process. But again, we've done everything possible to mitigate anything and will not require any investment to the city, again. Keep in mind, if there are any complaints that do take place, the expectations from Hilton itself, not to undermine anything of the city, the guest satisfaction pays, you know, pays the bills for the hotel, right? So that is, to the utmost importance to us as developers, that we have to make sure there is no impact, because it's a very huge investment, and the expectations for this high-end hotel and consumers are great, that we've done everything possible to meet it. And again, I wouldn't be standing up here if I didn't think it was not an issue. I don't see any change to the wastewater plan or any impact to the wastewater plan, as everything will cycle through here. And again, I think the impact is completely overstated, because I've hired a third-party research, we've gone through correlations, and I know more about the wastewater plant than I ever thought I would, right? And resolve that based on the studies provided from 2008 with my independent consultant, the correlations when it actually reaches, if not. Again, I think it's an opportune time that you have someone here willing to do everything it takes, far and beyond, whether it's now or, you know, down the road, and this opportunity doesn't arise in two years where you go back to Hilton. Well, guess what? Maybe they put that hotel in Gun Barrel. Maybe they put that hotel in Nawat, I mean, what have you, right? I mean, the opportunity, in my opinion, lends to itself, hence the year-long process I've endured to be able to put together the best proposal to make this project successful.
Thank you, Mr. Ann. Everybody in the queue has already spoken, so I just want to jump in real quick and just say something. I grew up in Greeley.
I was about to say that.
Have you ever been to Greeley?
I have not.
Okay. If this argument were to win the day tonight, you need to go eradicate an entire city to the north by the name of Greeley. I grew up there and I think I've said it before here that I smell manure and I think of my mother and home. And it's, so I guess it all depends on, my mom knows, it's home, it's Christmas. And so I have a little bit different take on this. But in addition to that, so comment number one, so I am in full agreement that if we move forward, that there needs to be language in the ordinance that basically puts you on notice that you are building a multimillion-dollar facility next to a water treatment facility and it stinks all the time and it is horrendous and it is the worst thing you've ever smelled. So in court, they can pull up this and play this council meeting so that you know that this is just the worst decision ever, okay? Now, that said, I've been down there a lot. You know, I always have been shopping down there in Harvest Junction and I've never bought a donut or gone to Cafe Rio and walked in going, oh, my gosh, I've just lost my appetite, I can smell the wastewater treatment plant. Until I joined council, I never even knew it existed there. And so it might stink on occasion, but I have never had the privilege of smelling and taking a whiff of that. I've never had that experience. And so based on my own observation, based on the fact that you've got restaurants just literally right across the street, I find it hard to believe that it would be impactful on people who are inside a large building, eating inside a large building, sleeping inside a large building that has appropriate ventilation. And even should they come out right across the street, like I said, there's restaurants that nobody's complained. So I'm kind of viewing this, I understand that 15.02.040 AC and D and 15.02.050 H.5A B and C have not been met, but I think it's kind of arbitrary. And I also, I don't think this is like the airport building residential homes around the airport where you're going to have people there for a long period, I mean, years and years and years, basically saying, oh, my gosh, why'd you let me build a home here? This is, you know, a night, two nights, three nights, 10 nights, and then they leave our town. And so if they happen to smell something on one of those off nights, they'll probably go, what's that? And they'll wake up in the morning and go about their business and come back the next time that they're required to come to Longmont. And when I say required to come to Longmont, I don't know many people who go, you know what, let's go vacation in Longmont. They have to come here for business, to see their families, et cetera. So you're kind of forced to come if you have to come. And so I'm actually, I wasn't sure how I was going to vote, but as I kind of hear what everybody's saying, I think that if Hilton's willing to vote with their dollars and build a hotel down there, welcome to Longmont. That's my one-seventh decision. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Bagley. I move ordinance 2016-20.
We still have outstanding discussion, it's okay. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I was going to make a comment then also make the motion. I was going to make that same analogy with Greeley.
But be careful, you're not from Greeley.
I'm not from Greeley.
You're not from Greeley, you gotta be careful.
I'm not originally from Colorado, however, and that's one thing you're not going to be able to overcome, is when the wind blows a certain way from the north to the south, Greeley, you can smell Greeley and as some people say, that's the smell of money. And having been out in that area quite a bit, you know, we had planned at one time before the flood, some recreation kayak course at one point, that didn't seem to be a problem with having a wastewater treatment plant in that proximity within a quarter of a mile. There's the Rio, you have Carl's Jr., Dunkin' Donuts, and just a little bit further across, Tokyo Joe's, Red Frog, and TGI Fridays. But as, I want to see those conditions in there, I think. You know what you're getting yourself into. I know, I've been in the hotel industry before and guest satisfaction is key number one. And, you know, I would say, don't come looking for us. We have our plans in place to make that treatment plant better. But if a guest complains, it's going to be on the Hilton.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Okay, as we, to me, the issue isn't really odor. As I said before, this is a wonderful project and I have no doubt that the Hilton will, in their explanation here and also in the explanation of dynamic odor mitigation, totally professional and I know this is possible to do. My view is, having come from the hospitality, having a background in that, I understand that people want to maximize things. If I had a hotel on a river, I would want to have outdoor dining, I'd want to have activities that maximize that. And what I do not want to see is our waste treatment plant impacted by, in the future, by in its need to expand. I don't want to see it affected by the desire, which is natural, of the Hilton to expand outside and make use of, maximize the use of their property, which I think is certainly a genuine thing. But I just don't want to jeopardize anything about the waste treatment plant because we can't do anything about that and we are going to have to expand. And hopefully, there will be, as we've discussed, mitigation efforts and it will all work out for the benefit of everybody. I think that's good. But I do want us to recognize this legally so that we have, we are not going to be getting any kind of hindrance on the further expansion of our waste treatment plant.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Bagley. I was actually going to approve this with conditions, assuming that the conditions were going to be the legalese that our city attorney was going to put into the contract. Is that what approving with conditions meant?
Mayor Protem, Councilmember Peck, there is language in the ordinance that the city and the applicant are going to have to enter an agreement before they can move further on in the development process. So we wouldn't need a condition for that specific piece.
That's legalese for yes, Councilmember Peck.
It's in the ordinance.
Okay. So what does that, just from my education, what does approve with conditions mean then? What would be the point of it? What conditions would we be talking about if we approved it with conditions?
Generally, under land development code, you can impose conditions that have a nexus to the project related to the review criteria.
Okay, thank you.
There's no other council members in the queue. We have a motion in a second, so why don't we go ahead and vote? That motion passes unanimously with Mayor Coombs absent. We are making great progress, but let's go ahead and take a seven to 10-minute break before we go on to this next item.
Seven?
Because my point is, five's too quick. If I say 10, it'll be longer, but let's start exactly in 10 minutes. I know Councilmember Santos needs to get home because he has somewhere to be.
Dale Radamaker will make this presentation.
I'm Mayor Pro Tem Bagley.
Turn on your mic. Thank you.
There you go.
Mayor Pro Tem Bagley and members of council, I thought I used to know how to do that. Dale Radamaker, Public Works, National Resources. So the item that we have in front of you tonight is a contract, a proposed contract between the city and the Army Corps of Engineers to conduct a Section 205 feasibility study on the resilient St. Crane project. And more specifically, it's for the Army to conduct a feasibility study on a portion of the project, namely that portion from Lykan's Gulch down to the Burlington Northern Railroad, which coincidentally is about the place where we run out of money currently. And so what we are trying to work with the Corps on is to initiate the process with them, the first one of which is this feasibility study that according to their regulations they need to conduct. And so the Corps of Engineers needs to conduct this work in order to prove up the cost benefit and in order to justify the potential future project expenditures by the federal government up to 10 million with a $5 million match from the city. We did brief you on this briefly at your council retreat. And so that's the contract that's in front of you tonight. We do believe it's in the interest of the city, but I would want the council to know that there are no guarantees. If we do this feasibility study and if the results do not come back with a high enough or favorable, most favorable cost benefit analysis, it may not warrant funding further. And so there's always that risk. We do believe having done the feasibility study for the NDRC competition, that we have a pretty good sense of that, that we think there will be a pretty clear feasibility, cost benefit ratio that is favorable. The other thing is that it is a competitive process, and so our project will be competing with other projects in this region. And once again, though, I think we've got a good project. I think we've got a good shot at it. The federal government is willing to commit their 709,000 to the project with the city committing up to 579,000, again, for the feasibility study. So if you have any questions, I can take those. Otherwise, we'll take your direction.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Dale, would, is it appropriate in this situation, since it's a competition, to get letters from the Colorado delegation?
Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, councilmember Santos, yes. And we've already had that packet of information prepared for Congressman Buck. So as soon as he gets here, we're going to put it in his hands, and absolutely, we should put it in the hands of all of our congressional delegation. I think it's, again, and we've got strong support, we've had strong support from the Corps of Engineers since the day of the flood. They've been interested in this project. They want to be part of it. As you know, though, it is difficult for congressional funding to sometimes occur for this type of work. And so what's interesting about the 205 program, though, is that it doesn't take additional congressional action in order for them to fund up to that level. So that's also an important aspect.
And in our conversations when we were in Washington, D.C., we did talk to Senator Gardner and Senator Bennett, and hopefully Senator Bennett will be able to make, come to Longmont and see what we've been doing. At our meeting, we stressed flood recovery, flood recovery, flood recovery with both. My conversation with Congressman Buck's office and both senators, that we are still under recovery and that any help that they can provide us, whether it's letters or congressional push, is greatly appreciated. And they both, both senators were, would like to do that.
Councilmember Christiansen.
So this is, they would be putting in about 750, and we would be putting in, or something like that, and we'd be putting in a little over half a million.
Correct.
Yeah.
Both of us, another way of looking at, both the federal government and the city have got their money at risk, is the way I sort of look at it.
Right.
They got a little more at risk than we do, but probably have more than we do, too.
But we could get millions of dollars' worth of assistance with this, and I think that's a risk worth taking.
Again, this work has to happen in order for the Corps to be able to even bring in the additional funding to do the project.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley. Dale, we really don't have any other source of funding. I mean, this is, if the Corps of Engineers don't give us partial on our 50 million, is that, is that correct, or?
Mayor Pro Tem Bagley and councilmember Peck, we're always looking for additional sources of funding. We have actually put in another request to FEMA for additional funding. I suspect over the next three or four years, we're going to continue to search for funding. I do believe the Corps is a solid organization that does great work. The difference with them, though, versus FEMA, is FEMA reimburses us to do the project. Corps of Engineers actually comes in and does the project. And so it's a, it's a whole different approach by this federal agency. Both FEMA and Department of Housing and Urban Development reimburse us for costs through the CDBGDR funding. In other words, we go out, we hire the contractors, we do the work, we get reimbursed. With the Corps of Engineers, they take over and do the project.
Knowing that, and I totally agree with going with the feasibility study, so I would like to move 8FR 201629.
Second. If there's no additional comment or questions from council, let's go ahead and vote. All right, the major, the motion passes unanimously with Mayor Coombs absent. Let's go ahead and move on to general business. 11A has been removed, so let's go ahead and do 11B, funding for Phase Two of the Competitive Pool and Ice Rink feasibility study.
Jeff Friesner will make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, Jeff Friesner, Recreation and Golf Manager, here to talk about funding for Phase Two of the feasibility study for the Competitive Pool and Ice Rink. In August of last year, staff and our consultants did a presentation of the results of Phase One. That presentation included a market analysis of the number of, or the area we would need to serve by this facility. It gave you a number of concepts to consider. It also did a evaluation of some Centennial Pool and what the future could be for that. That evening, you gave direction to staff to work on Phase Two. That was giving direction to do a conceptual plan that included a competitive pool, a leisure pool, and a full-size ice rink. With the pool, you asked us to further research whether it was in the city's best interest to build a 33-meter or 50-meter pool. You also asked us to look at the best location to locate this facility, and you asked us to refine the estimated cost for not just building, but long-term operation and the anticipated revenue. With that, at the time, it was too late to go through the normal budget process to request the $20,000 that is needed to do the Phase Two. We are asking tonight that you consider funding Phase Two out of council contingency at an amount of $20,000. That's really all I have to present and can answer any questions you might have.
Are there any comments or questions? Councilmember Moore.
So Superior's breaking ground on two new ice rinks down there, or two and a half rinks of ice and an indoor soccer field. Will that have any impact on potential revenue opportunities for this facility?
We don't believe so. When we did our market analysis, that was underway, and we knew that was going to be built. I think our bigger concern when, was the last November, when Carbon Valley was proposing to build an ice rink, that failed. And at this time, we feel that the numbers in the analysis would support a facility here in Longmont.
So I just, I keep reminding people of this, but Southwest Longmont's been promised a rec center since 2006, and this is a new CIP opportunity that we're considering here. And I think it's incumbent on the city to follow through on earlier plans than later plans. And to people in that part of town are, have been expecting it, and I would hope that future funding for any kind of recreation facility would go to that, that part of town.
Councilmember Peck.
First of all, I love the idea of a new swimming pool. I'm concerned about the operating cost for the ice rink. I did read your feasibility study, and the operating cost didn't look very favorable over the long term. And other cities that have had ice rinks, Boulder, Flatirons, closed theirs down and turned it into a recreation center. And years ago, South Suburban had an ice rink as well, and their study said that they would have to have events 24/7 to pay for it after they'd have it in a few years. The only thing that saved them was the Avalanche came along and are using it for a practice rink. But that's my concern. And what would the second phase of the feasibility show us above and beyond what the first phase showed us?
I think it's going to get into more specifics. When, when the Phase One was done, it was very general because we really hadn't been given any direction of the type of facility that would be built. Based on some of the feedback that we've had communicating with other communities, the ice rinks are actually doing better financially nowadays than the competitive pools because of some of the variety that, that you can do throughout the day to not only get young people to play hockey and do ice skating, but also working towards getting older folks into the facility also. The other part of that is, is why we're also proposing that a leisure pool be built. We feel like the competitive pool won't do as well as ice, but the leisure component, which has the ability to get more people in there, because the whole goal is, is getting wet and splashing, not so much fitness and wellness, that we have found, even with the rec center here, that, that, that pool is much more busy than the lap pool, and feel like that will only help us financially.
Okay. Let's see, what was the other question I was going to ask you? Oh, I'll come back to it.
So I think...
Oh, I remembered, sorry. Did the city, the city and the school district sat down together and talked about this? What was the school district's comments about going into a partnership with us on this?
So I think when we had a joint meeting with the, the school district and the city council members, they were interested and they were supportive of it. I know that they have a lot that they're looking at in terms of their issues and their construction needs. And I think they indicated in that meeting that it's something that would take more, they would need to review it more. A couple of things that we talked about in this is, we are obviously going to have to look for partners as potential opportunities in this process. And, and, and that probably should be a pretty broad list in terms of, do we talk to the why and what they're looking at? There's a number of folks that we need to talk to as we're moving through the process. I think a piece of this, going back to your, your previous question, was the cost and the operating piece of this, and what does that look like? Those were very high-level estimates, and so part of this process is really going to be to get more granular and start fine-tuning those numbers. And that's an important piece when you really start looking at partners in terms of, what does that look like? You need more detail to really have those conversations.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. No, councilmember Moore, I agree with you 100% on Southwest Longmont and the Dry Creek Rec Center that hopefully one day will be built. But looking at currently with Centennial Pool and the age that it actually is, and whether, and again, not knowing, that's why I'm kind of, I will move this along to, to fund it, but to know whether, is it at Centennial? Is it in Dry Creek? Where, you know, where potentially it could be? And as Harold said, to drill down the specifics of what it's all going to cost, whether it's, you know, as some member of the public said, two sheets of ice would be, that's more money. But one sheet of ice and, you know, in a, in a lap pool with, with a leisure item, and Jeff, I think you're right on. I mean, you see at the rec center, the lap lanes should have been more, but the, the leisure area, the lazy river, everything else, the slides, that's what gets people there into that pool. So I move that we direct staff to use $20,000 for the Phase Two of the feasibility study.
Second.
As recommended from the council contingency, how about that? Let's go ahead and vote. The motion passes with councilmember Christiansen saying no and Mayor Coombs being absent.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and talk about the review of priority-based budgeting, desired results. Looks like we have Jim Golden to address this.
That's correct. Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, members of council, I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance. Call up my slides. So as council is aware, we, we have been engaged in using prioritization, priority-based budgeting for a few years now. In priority-based budgeting, one of the key principles is that we evaluate all of the city's programs against the desired results of the city council and the community, as well as against other program attributes. But tonight, wanted to check back in with the council about the desired results. Two years ago, this, the city council did identify the desired results that are currently in place. We have been working with those in the last two budget processes and using them to evaluate each of our, our city services and programs. So this here, on this slide here, is the four desired results of the city council for the community programs, which are safe community, reliable, innovative, and resilient infrastructure, thriving economic climate, and vibrant amenities and opportunities for all. And then the fifth here, fifth is a governance, desired result, responsible internal operations and governance. So what we've done, I've got here in your communication and on these slides, I've identified what the council has in the past put together as the bullets that we use to define each of these different desired results. I'm not going to read them all to you. I know you've, hopefully you've had an opportunity to look through them in the communication. There's, there's five underneath vibrant amenities. There are six bullets underneath the safe community. Under infrastructure, we have four more bullets. And then under thriving economic climate, we have seven bullets identified. And then under the governance programs, we have these five bullets identified. So what the, what the staff intends to do is to, you know, based on what direction you give us, we're going to take the desired results, and it'll, it'll determine what we do next step for the 2016 programs and putting them through the process for the 2017 budget process. If the council desires to change the definitions at all, change any of the bullets, we'll have to make an assessment about whether or not we will need to rescore the programs and potentially maybe even go out to the community to get community input. Wanted to do, to point out to you, though, that, that each of these desired results have been considered and aligned with the process, the envisioned Longmont process currently, and has been, you know, so far, working pretty well with the process. So we, we do believe that, that the desired results in place are working pretty well right now. We wouldn't want to change them too much away from what you're using in the envisioned Longmont process. So we look for direction from you tonight.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bagley. So Jim, I just, just a point of clarification. Was the 2016 budget, the first year we actually did a fully, full implementation of priority-based budgeting and set our budget according to these priorities?
Mayor Pro Tem Bagley, members of council, I, I don't think that, that the finance department thinks we've even done that, reached that point yet of, of using it fully. We were hindered this year in our ability to get our, our data updated in time to be able to utilize it for the 2016 budget process. We are going to, we're upgrading the software that we're using. It will now be web-based. We're, we're actually implementing that currently, and hopefully, if everything goes well this quarter, we will be able to use updated information from '16's costing and '16's programs to use in the '17 budget process. So what we've done in the last two years is we have taken all of our requests that, excuse me, that have gone to the council, level-one request, level-two requests, and we have identified what programs there, they are linked to and what quartiles they're from. So we've utilized it to that degree, but we do believe we can, can use it further in future budget processes.
So it's still an evolving process. 2017 will be further implementation and 2018... 2017 will be further implementation and 2018 beyond that.
Correct.
Councilmember Christiansen. You're up.
Okay, I was working on my fingernails. You know, as I read through this again, and I know we read through this numerous times, there's no mention of actual employment and jobs, and I really do think that's a lack. There's, it's not under vibrant amenities. The only thing it says is where people of all ages want to live, work. And of course, people want to work, but can they work? That's an opportunity people need, is the opportunity to work. I would suggest we add employment either there after the, the bullet one where it talks about entertainment and educational and employment arts, cultural and recreational activities or opportunities, or somewhere under thriving economic climate because we don't have a thriving economic climate unless we have a job strategy and unless we have good quality jobs. And it, it's really important that we focus on that being part of our, you know, our budget-based priority, that we encourage that.
Mayor Protem, Members of Council, and I, I do believe it does probably belong in thriving economic climate, and I don't think it's a stretch or a large change to probably work that in. Couldn't tell you off the top of my head just where, but we can take a look at that.
Right, I know, I was trying to look at that too, and I, I don't know. No, you know, just employment opportunities.
Got it.
Diversity of employment opportunities. Thanks.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Bagley. Under thriving economic climate, we do have entrepreneurs and new and existing businesses of all sizes, types are planned for, invested in and attracted. That's the same thing as jobs.
It is, I, I mean, we could, all I'm thinking is that we could probably spell it out in that same bullet by adding something about bringing in jobs.
You could say entrepreneurs and new and existing businesses that supply jobs. But it's the same, it's-
I'm not thinking, I'm not thinking we need any new bullets, but I think it can fit in there pretty easily.
With a comma. Comma. Attracting jobs, something like that.
Not a stretch to go there though, but spell it out clearly.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. It's actually pretty clear. Wordsmithing, as I've found over the last eight years on council, gets us in a lot of trouble, especially when we're doing, doing it here at the dais. Again, natural amenities to the built environment neighborhoods comprehensively well-planned, developed and now into the future. Entrepreneurs and new and existing businesses of all size, types are planned for and invested and attracted. Sustainable, resilient revenue streams are encouraged, that's also jobs and, and business. Partnerships across the city and region are actively developed. Unless you want to put just jobs, J-O-B-S, and not Joe, but jobs, in here, it's right there. I don't see the need for a change unless somebody is just, we're looking to wordsmith. And if we're looking to wordsmith, let's wordsmith the whole thing.
I, I don't think it's a big deal to add in the comma and then whatever prepositional phrase or additional, something that clarifies it. But yeah, in a nutshell, my experience is that whenever you support local businesses or businesses in general, that's where jobs come from. So making, I think we're all saying the same thing. Assistant City, ah, I was going to say, yeah, true? Assistant City Manager Sandy Cedar weighing in on the topic.
I just wanted to remind the council that when we went through the phrasing of, of a lot of this work, we wanted to make sure that we were keeping it to what the city's responsibility was. And so if we were to add that wording to the entrepreneurs bullet, you know, we could certainly say leading to job opportunities, you know, that, that would be fine. I just want to make sure that the council remembers that what we really were trying to hone in is on what does the city do? And we don't, we do provide, we're a major employer, we do provide lots of jobs and thank you. But in addition to that, just making sure that we keep consistent with the wording around what the city has control over.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Sandy Cedar. Councilmember Christiansen.
Emphasizing things from the top down doesn't really, isn't the same. If, if you just added diverse economic, diverse employment opportunities, it would satisfy both ends of the spectrum.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As I've said over and over and over, we don't create jobs. We encourage an environment. You know, I got in trouble for speaking under my breath when other members of council was, were speaking. But we don't create jobs. We create an environment to, whether it's not trickle-down, but more of a trickle-up, if you want to go that way, of encouraging those entrepreneurs that have a home business to build that business, to do a, to become brick and mortar, to then potentially have internet sales or before the brick and mortar, internet sales then to brick and mortar. Unless it is going to be council's job to create jobs, that, that's what this is sounding like, and that's not what we do.
Councilmember Pack.
Hello. Mayor Protem Bagley. I understand what's being said, but I think it's all been covered. Can we just move on to the next item? Thank you.
I think that my two cents is just in general, I think that the desired results are spot-on. And whenever you're doing any type of organizational change, trying to become better, you basically look at where do we spend our money and how do we budget? And I think that these priorities are exactly what we need to be looking at through the budget process. And so one of seven, I would encourage us to continue to focus on these desired results and keep doing it until our entire budget is focused on these issues. And so, do you need anything from us other than just hearing us talk for a few minutes?
I'm good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. And let's go ahead and do our final general business item, 11D, consideration of options for our local licensing authority regarding our liquor.
Mayor Protem Bagley and Members of Council, I'm Valerie Skitt, your city clerk. I'm not going to go into lots of detail with this item. You have the packet in front of you. Staff did put together some options, pros and cons on three different models for liquor authority, one being a citizen board, municipal judge and a hearing officer, all of which are used in the state of Colorado right now. We looked at 14 different communities in Colorado, most of them around our size or larger of those. Eight have citizen boards, four have municipal, use their municipal judge as an authority, one has a hearing officer and one is the director of X, Y, and licensing as their authority, and that would be Denver. We did make some recommendation, we didn't make recommendations about which model to use because that truly is up to you which one to use. They're, they've all worked in different areas. They have pros and cons, each one of them does. But we did make a recommendation as a staff that we could do, become more efficient and more effective if we also incorporated some administrative approval processes along with whatever model you choose to use for your actual authority. And so if you have any questions about those things, what that looks like, or, or what the differences are, what we're recommending, certainly glad to answer that, but I think it really is your discussion and your choice on models that you use.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Now Valerie, the recommendations you guys have given us as far as doing the administrative review, I think are greatly needed. Speeding up mundane items that has, that has held liquor license hearings or liquor license in general, because the judge had to leave or doesn't do, doesn't hold a board, a liquor authority in December, just doesn't work. Now, the other part of whether or not we like a citizen board, a, the judge to do it, or a hearing officer, you know, my problem with having a municipal judge is that the current judge made it a court proceeding. It's not a court proceeding. It's a liquor authority. I know that there's some legal aspects to that, and, and you want to have an attorney there present, but the, the pomp and circumstance of all rise and everything else needs to get, you, you should be going into a liquor authority board meeting, not before a judge. You know, I can't remember if it was a member of staff or another, someone else throughout time on council talking about how other cities have done it. I think the municipal judge and Greeley, it's, it's the judge that does it, but doesn't wear the robe and make you all rise and all, again, the pomp and circumstance of going to court. That can be intimidating for anyone going in, especially when you're just looking to do a liquor license. So I'm hesitant to have the, the, the judge, the municipal judge be the authority. I wouldn't mind either a hearing officer or a citizen board, probably a five-member citizen board. However, I think the administrative review approval is greatly needed, and I think that's a path that we should follow.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Bagley. Well, I do like the administrative approval processes. I think that for a lot of things like special events and thing, requirements that are not like at the level of having to make a decision based on something, new information and all that kind of stuff makes a lot of sense. I do however think that municipal judge is a good model overall. We're already paying a judge, we wouldn't have that additional cost. We have to make sure that there are, there are backup positions in place to cover for a judge if they're not able to make a, a monthly meeting. That's been an issue in the past with, with the judge not being in town or on vacation, we can't hold a hearing. So now all of a sudden, we're out 60 or 75 days to get a hearing. So part of that solution in my mind needs to be, we have to have a backup. Who do we go to if the judge is not available? As far as the pomp and circumstance, I've, I've never been to one, so I can't comment on that. But I do think that it is more of an administrative process for most of this stuff, and the judge needs to be, in my mind, the one that work, does the heavy lifting on, on the major applications.
Councilmember Pack.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Bagley. The gentleman who owns the restaurants in Boulder County made a good point that with the municipal judge, there is no, there's no representation of their case. They don't get to explain or talk. But I do understand that it's someone who understands the law, whether it be a municipal judge or an attorney should actually make the final decision. But I was wondering if we couldn't have a board that makes a recommendation to the judge, hearing the applicants, and then the judge makes the final decision, hearing the applicant, rather than just a formal form that they fill out, they actually get to make their case to a, a board that would then recommend to the judge. That would be my thought.
Councilmember Christiansen.
I think I mostly agree with Councilman Moore that I, but I, I do see what Councilman Santos is saying. We don't, this is more of a, it doesn't really require a court hearing and that, yeah, it's a permit thing. So I, I do think though, that having the judge do this, maybe in a different format than the, certainly the court hearing, is beneficial to the city because first of all, they do know the rules, and secondly, we're not paying them any more money than we already were. We, we do definitely need to have a backup in case the judge is not there because having it all dependent upon one person, and that would be true of a hearing officer too, we'd have to have a backup for a hearing officer. So anytime you have it just dependent upon one person. But I do see what the, the business owner from Boulder was saying is that as with a traffic ticket, you're, there really isn't much discussion there. It would be good to be able to have some kind of discussion, and I would hope that would be true too, because when you have too many administrative approvals, you can get into a lot of trouble with, I would not vote for having new license applications, change of locations for existing licenses and modification of premises, because sometimes you can get into a lot of trouble just saying, oh yeah, okay, it sounds good. And then you find out that they have modified, modified the premise to, well, in a way that isn't really what you would do if you took more time to review the case. So I think we should be careful about what we okay as administrative approvals. But I think it would be possible to have some kind of stipulations about how a judge would handle things in a much more, in a less formal way than a court hearing, because that isn't appropriate for a liquor license, I don't think at all. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Christiansen. I guess my two cents is that I think that it's effective and efficient to do it with the judge. I can certainly understand the good gentleman's reasoning when he spoke, public invited to be heard, because being a lawyer, there's a huge difference between talking to a judge who sits on the bench and has been there. He doesn't, he sees through the charm and BS no problem. And when you're dealing with a jury or an arbiter or mediator, you know, you always go in thinking, hey, I can, I can snow this person. But judges are a little different because they wear the robe and, and they're just a little different. I don't think that, so I think that it's, I think that we should go ahead and continue with the judge, but I also think that we should go ahead and adopt some of the administrative review provisions. Specifically, I think that we should do administration approval on change in corporate structure, either a reorg or new officers, change of trade name, manager registration, renewals, special event permits, tasting permits, and then the other things we leave with the judge. And I, I think that would go a long way to speeding things up, and the other stuff's important enough that they can wait another 30 days to get their permit, but that other stuff would, you know, just be a no-brainer and can come to city staff and have it dealt with. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would, I would agree with a vast majority of that. If we're going to have the judge be the liquor authority, it needs to be done, it can't be done in court. Again, I, I understand, you know, the, the, a judge can see through the, the, you know, BS and charm, but to be able to have a conversation with the judge, when, when you go in, in a traffic court and you've done 85 in a 55, you're not going to have, oh wait, I had to go, I had to, you know, my dog was sick or something of that nature. But here, you need to have a dialogue with that authority to say, not only is it, you know, it's in a great part of town, we're trying to establish X, Y, and Z, and not have the ju, you know, sit there with the robe on and, and again, going through a judicial process, this is not a judicial process. That's my concern, that's how it's being done currently, and I've talked to many people who've gone through the process here in Longmont, and it, they, they feel, they, they feel like they're in court and they're, they're, you know, they're guilty until proven innocent. And that's not how it should be.
I'm guessing that we will see a stylistic-
I hope so.
...difference between Judge Vanderhayden, how she would run these, and, and other judge. There's judges that are pretty conversant and go back and forth, and that will probably depend more on us.
Well, and, and it's perhaps that we, whatever we finally decide, if it is the municipal judge, that we put at least some sort of regulations on how that meeting should progress.
Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Christiansen.
I, I agree with, with what Councilman Santos is saying. I, I agree with, with what Councilman Santos is saying, and also with the categories that you listed, with one exception, and that's because of some information that I've heard about, special events are often held by people who've never done this before, and they need, they, they don't know any of the rules, and that can lead to all kinds of problems when you've got alcohol going on in a large event, and nobody checking people's ages, nobody checking anything like that. So I, I would say that maybe special events, although they are more timely and you don't want to delay them, as Josh Goldberg said in our packet, some, I think for somebody who hasn't ever had an event, they would need to be reviewed by somebody instead of just an administrative review. But somebody, for instance, like, well, we all know the people who regularly do these things, they don't need to be, that's a perfect example of a good administrative view to just facilitate making it faster and more efficient.
Mayor Pro Tim, may I just address a couple of things?
Oh, you may.
Oh, thank you very much. In terms of the, the administrative approval, criteria would be laid out ahead of time for that approval. So if, for instance, a special event permit plan did not come in and meet those criteria, it would automatically be sent to, to the hearing office, to the authority. So we would be, make sure that all those standard things are laid out in their plan, and if they aren't, then they would have to go and speak to the authority. So that, that was, that's what administrative approval really is. We have the criteria laid out. If anything is, does not match those criteria, it goes to the authority, even if it's one of these things that you've granted administrative approval for. So, and I do have to talk about special events. I did make a comment in the communication that special event, event approval by administrative approval requires an ordinance change. That's not true. We can do that without an ordinance change. What requires an opt-out ordinance is if we want to skip the state process, which most people who do administrative approval do skip, because the state is just overwhelmed with special event permits.
That's right.
And they really feel on a local level, you know what your controls are needed more than they do. So, you know, if, if you want us to follow the opt-out and, and skip that state approval piece, then we would, we have to bring it back in ordinance to do that. Could give you a little more detail on that before we got there, when we bring that ordinance back.
Thank you.
And I do want to clarify, I checked off the ones that you said that you thought should be administrative approval. It looks like really the only one that we were recommending that you're not is the transfer of ownership, and then the temporary permits we currently do, pending transfer of ownership, we currently do administratively. That's the only one we do administratively, because there is a follow-up process with that transfer that would be in front of the authority, if, if that goes to the authority.
Okay.
So we could continue the temporary permits.
Yeah, I didn't make a motion, but if, if nobody else does, I'm going to. So the Councilmember Moore.
So is there any requirement that these authority hearings be held in chambers? So that was just a choice of the, the current judge, right?
Mayor Pro Tim Bagley and Councilmember Moore, when we, we did have a citizen board originally, they held it right here in the council chambers. Then when you, when you switched to 97 and went to the judge, she chose to do that in the chambers over there. It could be at any location. It could be in a, in a less formal setting than a courtroom. It's convenient, because the judge is over there. I, I really think it's just a matter of, as Councilmember Bagley said, or
Like a conference room?
It's a, it's a style thing.
So, I mean, I think it, I think that that, if that's really making angst amongst people applying for liquor licenses, then I, I don't know why council wouldn't direct them to not hold them in, in chambers and just hold it in a conference room and say, you know, this is where you're going to hold these hearings, and it's going to be in this room. Or right here in council chambers. I mean, I just think that it's overdoing it to hold it in a, in a courtroom, but I, I don't, I do like the thought that we have consistent authority being the judge, making the decisions based on what, what goes on in the community. I have serious, serious reservations on a board and, and the political ramifications around that, with the judge being independent, and we have, we have separation from all kinds of political pushing, from shoving that can potentially go on. And so that's, if we don't have to hold them in the, in the courtroom, then I think we just tell them that we can't hold them in the courtroom.
Mayor Pro Tim, and that's something that, you know, council, as, as you go through the selection process, can actually, you know, that can be one of your points that you talk about in expectations, once you all select the position. So that, that, that conversation could actually occur in that venue.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Bagley. I would like to move that we direct staff to bring back that we would continue with our judge as the liquor authority, and we would also have administrative approval on the mentioned items that you mentioned, which I, I just think that is the easiest way. I think what, the reason that a citizen board bothers me a little bit is just what you said, it could become political, and the judge is elected, a judge is an elected official, and there are ramifications there should whoever we choose not do a very good job. So that's my motion.
Second.
And, excuse me, but since your judge is currently your authority, you wouldn't have to bring anything back to change that?
The administrative.
But we could certainly bring back the administrative criteria that you would recommend that the authority use, if that's what you'd like to see.
One thing that council did discuss is having a backup in terms of, I guess, we would need to look at a hearing officer or a backup judge or something to come in and fill that capacity.
Couldn't we have the city prosecutor do it? No?
No, the city prosecutor actually is
Adverse party.
Represents the city when there's a contested license, or when there's a violation or something like that.
Good point. Okay. Well, think of something. Give us some ideas. All right.
I just wanted to include that, because that was not in the motion, and I wanted to see if that was something.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Bagley. I just want to make the point that I, I don't have a problem with the municipal judge being the authority, but I do understand the one-on-one FaceTime for the applicant to make their case, rather than just having a license denied based upon an application without anyone being able to make their case. And if we can work that into the process, I, I would really think that would be favorable.
And, and I think that's what, they do that. The, like, they, they get that chance, but to present their case, it depends on the judge what type of feedback. Some just sit there and listen, and you wonder what they're thinking until the end. And speaking of which, I don't know if you guys noticed, but Judge Mulvihill and our other two judge committee, or selection committee members were out there wandering around, waving at us, so it looks like they're hard at work getting us some options. So do you have enough from us?
The only other direction I would, well, if you're going to vote on that, and then I would like some direction on whether you want us to opt out of the state review of special events, or whether we should continue with that.
I think we should opt out.
Yes, let's add that to the motion.
Yeah, it was you, wasn't it? I think you were the second.
Was it me?
Yeah.
It was me.
Yeah, it was you, you.
That's fine.
All right, so let's go ahead and vote, just by show of hands. All in favor? The vote is unanimous with Councilmember Coombs.
Ooh, busting him down. Councilmember Coombs?
I'm sorry, Mayor Coombs. I like the sound of that mayor stuff, you know, so sorry, mayor. Now, the, Mayor, Mayor Coombs is, is absent. So let's go ahead and move on to final call, public invited to be heard. I know there's at least one person who would, come on down. If you go ahead and state your name and address for the record, and share with us your thoughts.
I'm Clyde Jaeger, and I live at 917 Terry Street. And something just struck me here about having an oversight authority, or a liquor, liquor licensing authority, because I went as far as the Attorney Regulation Council, the bar association, with complaints on the judge at one time, and I was told by the bar that whoever appoints the judge has to also be the oversight authority or appoint one, because their jurisdiction, city, county, or state, retains the judge by vote. And I got to thinking about that, and just now with this conversation I was hearing here, this judge appointed a liquor store. She had an order in her hand, our judge here, stating that she couldn't, you know, it was, she could convict somebody by using this law this way, and she turns this to the same law, and in violation of that law, licenses a liquor store adjacent to residential district. It's never been required or allowed in the city. And so any judge you appoint could do whatever they want, and there's no oversight authority. So what I'm thinking is if there's going to be a licensing authority for liquor licensing, couldn't that double as a oversight authority over the municipal judge as well? Could that be something integrated? And, and would it work? And, and, you know, there's, there's a whole lot of issue there, and I'd love to talk to Mr. Bagley about that. That's just one of my, my idea of how I think that you, my opinion would be that you could go on as usual, just like liquor licensing authority, the judge could be that, and six months from now, you could agonize over the issue of putting an authority in place and taking that away from the judge. I don't see why that couldn't happen also. But that was the, one of the issues I wanted to go a little farther on, but I only get three minutes. So the other thing is, a prior project in the city where they revamped Main Street caused huge flooding just south of Maine, First and Main, and it looks like they're going to put more capacity or more, more water in, and it can't handle the capacity that 's there already. I think there should be somebody have a look at that. We have water running down, pushing up a sewer line that's supposed to come this way because of how it's put together. It doesn't work. And, and the third issue I have is that during that prior project, the city took sidewalk away from not only the city sidewalk, but clear up to my building, and they severed handicap ADA, reasonable ADA handicap access to my property. And that's something that should be looked at now as well, and I, I would love to have somebody take the time to come to the property, look it over, and some of the other issues over, and I would ask that Mr. Bagley would come out, you know, if, if he would. Would that be reasonable?
What I'd ask you to do, just call the office, squat to lunch.
Pardon me?
Call my office.
Okay.
Just Google it, Bagley Law Firm.
Yeah.
Call it. Say you're calling for city council, and they'll put you on the schedule. Let's go sit down and have lunch.
I don't know who better to look at some of those things.
Yeah, I'm more fun than these guys. Don't worry, we'll go do it.
And the six of us are always willing to come in.
I'll eat. They'll go down. The mayor and council, anyone else public invited to be heard? All right, with that, let's go ahead to mayor and council comments.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes.
The, 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 the look of getting consent.
Yes, you have consent. I know you want to go to Japan, so let's.
You know, I, I do have a flight tomorrow, but I was going to talk about what Mr. Jaeger was talking about. You know, council is, in the end, can be the oversight of the municipal judge for cause. You know, the, the judge is retained by, retained and positioned by the voters, but if there is cause that comes up, council can, has some authority over the municipal judge. Anyway, we don't have a meeting next week. Spring break is upon us. I would like to thank Mayor Pro Tim Bagley for taking my coffee with council last week. I do appreciate it, and we have already switched dates for the next one, so.
No problem.
Thank you very much, and see you all in two weeks.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Council, Mayor Pro Tim. Sorry, Bagley.
That's all right, Brian. It's all right.
Actually, I just wanted to inform staff that Dr. Cog purchased the rights to a GrantFinder program, and it's available to all departments. It is a, a program that will allow you to dig deeper into federal grants, and will send alerts, and I think it's, Dr. Cog would like the program to be used, so that if it's available again next year, they can have a reason to, for us to use it, and I will give you the password, the login and the password that anybody, any department can use.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Bagley. Since last week I didn't get to do a business of the week, I thought I should this week. And last week, it was going to be the Cheese Importers, which we talked about for quite some time last week. Cheese Importers, First and Main, incredible place, you should need to go look at it. We are letting them purchase it, and, and it's a, a great asset. Not only do they have cheese, but they have a restaurant there, all kinds of, if you're a foodie, olives, they've got all kinds of really cool things to eat and drink, and you should go check them out, the Cheese Importers at First and Main.
I don't see anybody else who wants to say anything from council, so city manager, anything?
No comments, mayor, council.
Wise man. City attorney, may?
No comments, Mayor Pro Tim.
We're adjourned.